Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Perth County Council this twentieth day of April. I'd like to call our meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their heads for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ahana Shabay, who have longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse Indigenous and Tias and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and a continued stewardship of the land on which we live. And if you have a covenary interest, you can dispose that now or as the meeting goes along. You have a motion that will confirm the agenda. Is there anything anyone wishes to add? Change note that the April twenty twenty-three agenda be approved by Deputy Warden Callum, second by Councillor Orr. All in favour? Carry. Sorry, I have a bit of a cold this morning. It pleads everyone to speak up to because I'm a little deaf too. So if I'm getting older, it's my call. But anyway, we have nineteen items on our consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone would like to vote? Councillor Kastenber?
Good morning, Warden. Yes, I'd like to pull item six point one seven for our discussion. It is actually pursuant to an item that was on the last consent agenda, which I was absent for because responsibilities that morning.
Six point seven, one seven, sorry, one seven. Any one else have anything they would like to ask questions on? Okay, so then we will council receive the consent agenda items six point one to six point one six and six point one eight and one point nine and approve the April sixth twenty twenty-three council minutes. Moved by Councillor Smith, second by Councillor Mackenzie. All in favour? Carry. Okay, Councillor Kastenber on seventeen.
Yes, thank you. I would like to suggest that this council support and endorse the the letter. The originating letter actually was from North Perth Council and pertains to the benefits of lack of involvement or engagement with school armed cameras, school bus armed cameras. Certainly, the the original motion outlines some statistics about challenges that are being faced on the roads these days by school bus operators, who are seeing an increasing number of what they call blowbys, people avoiding paying attention to the school bus stopper. And certainly, there's an opportunity for school bus companies to equip their buses with stop armed cameras. This, of course, requires the administrative monetary penalty system to be in place because these cameras take images and these images are ultimately processed through the system and used as an AMP. So North Perth Council raised this matter in a resolution probably about a month ago, and it has been receiving significant support around the province. The motion actually calls for the province to take on its responsibilities and equip these school busts with stop armed cameras, but also to fund in smaller rural municipalities the costs of implementing an administrative monetary penalty system. And so I'd like to invite this council to lend its support to the many others already who have lent their support and call on the province to fund and pay for its responsibilities around school bus stop armed cameras and to support local municipalities in their implementation of the administrative monetary penalty system.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? So you wish to put a motion forward?
That we endorse, we can endorse this letter because it is sort of an endorsement of the original. But in the process, we intend to endorse the letter from Perth calling on the province to to implement or support the implementation of administrative monetary penalty systems across the province of Ontario, and especially with regards to small municipalities, which often don't have the funds to do it. Tyler, does that sort of make sense, Tyler?
Yep, it does.
It does, right.
Tyler's practically hyping here somehow. We have a mover, let's get a second there, and then we'll have second by Councillor Hson. Okay, any comments, Councillor Smith?
Just a quick comment at the Good Roads Conference this week. There's a movement that's been going for quite a while. It's called Let's Remember Adam. Adam was killed by a pastor by a bus here in two thousand. He was five years old. So his brother is chair of that movement. So it's got traction. It was well received, his presentation at the conference. So I think the provincial people are aware of what's happening. So any support that we can we can give towards this is would be well taken. So obviously, I would support this for sure.
Anyone else? What are you doing there?
So through through the warden, the council endorsed a letter from the municipality of South Huron, and the council support the municipality of North Huron's call on the province to support the implementation of administrative monetary penalties with respect to school bus cameras.
What is it? And administration? Administrative monetary penalty system?
Yeah.
Yeah. And perhaps we should reference that this originated with North Perth somehow in the resolutions.
The council support the municipality of North Perth's call on the province with respect to the implementation of administrative monetary penalties. Is there anything else that we need added on that?
Okay, that's good for the move into secondary. More questions? All in favour? Carry. Okay, we're going to move to public hearings, meetings and delegations. And we do have a couple of delegations this morning. And the first one is from Kristin Kane, Amy McDonald, Urin Perth, United Way Planning and Social Research. Are they with us this morning? They're coming in on the screen. Maybe. I've lost my.
Good morning. I am Kristin Crane from the United Way. I'm the Director of Social Research and Planning, and I'm joined by my colleague from Huron Perth Public Health.
Hi, I'm Candice Cunningham. I am a registered dietitian with Huron Perth Public Health.
Morning, ladies, and welcome to Perth County Council, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And we have a presentation to be shared, and it's just loading right now. Great, thank you. Next. So we're here to speak about food insecurity, and we both have related research reports that were completed at the end of twenty twenty-two that we will speak to. In November twenty twenty-two, the Social Research and Planning Council team created and implemented a survey to capture the characteristics of household food insecurity in both Huron and Perth counties. And thanks to extensive promotion and community efforts, seven hundred and forty surveys were able to meet the criteria and were analysed. And I will present the key findings to you today. Next. Household food insecurity is defined as inadequate or insecure access to food due to financial constraints. And in our survey, thirty-three percent of participants are facing moderate or severe food insecurity. Only three percent of respondents felt that their income met their everyday needs. And unfortunately, we know when a household is experiencing food insecurity, they are already likely struggling financially to cover other basic living expenses. Next. The main source of household income for the majority of respondents was full-time employment. So sixty-two percent of people who are facing food insecurity are employed full-time. Provincially, we know that about forty-eight percent of food insecure households in Ontario have employment income. Next. When asked if the incomes of survey participants met their needs, the answer was no for thirty-seven percent of participants. So this data demonstrates that the wages in our region are not sufficient to meet basic needs. From other research, we do know that eighty-one percent of the most common jobs in Huron and Perth as a region are below twenty-five dollars an hour, and this is based upon twenty twenty data. Next. In our survey, we found that eighty-eight percent of people had sacrificed the household food budget to pay for other living expenses. And the most common expense that has forced households to reduce their food budget is paying for rent or mortgages for sixty-seven percent of respondents. And this was followed by transportation and utilities. Households living on low incomes struggle to pay the rent and bills and food. And because food budgets are flexible, they are sacrificed to pay other fixed bills and expenses. Next. Nine percent of participants said that they had to cut the size of their children's meals or their children had to skip a meal almost every month because there was not enough money to buy food. We also asked if people ever had to go an entire day without eating because there was not enough money. And nineteen percent of people said it happened almost every month. And this is a statistic I really want to highlight for you. Three percent of our respondents said that their children had to go a whole day without food almost every month, and seven percent said it happens some months that their children are having to go a whole day without food. So we do know that there are many households in our region with children who are going an entire day without eating. Next. When we look at national and provincial data, we know that in twenty twenty-one, sixteen percent were living in food insecure households. Next. And fourteen point six percent of Huron and Perth residents were living in food insecure households. And I do want to note to the stat that we have pre-pandemic, which was from twenty seventeen, which showed that eleven percent of Huron and Perth residents were food insecure. So this is quite a large jump from pre-pandemic prevalence to current. Next. Next. Despite significant evidence that food insecurity is an income problem, responses in Canada continue to focus on food provision with the most emphasis on food charities. Next. There is a huge difference in the number of households experiencing food insecurity and the number of households who rely on food banks for food. In twenty twelve, there were five times more people living in food insecure households than those accessing food banks. Data from twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen suggests that it's actually up seven times. Next. Food banks are often the last resort for people to obtain food. Most people ask for financial help from their family or friends or will miss a payment before having to use a food bank. Next. While food banks do provide temporary relief for those who do access them, there is no evidence that they are a solution to food insecurity. Next. In our local survey, almost fifty percent of participants had said that they never used any community food programs. And these could be food boxes, community meals, food banks, food pantries. And this is consistent with the data that Candice has shared from national studies. Next. So there are many health implications when someone lives in food insecure households that do go far beyond nutrition. Next. So mental health, the risk of experiencing depression, anxiety and mood disorders or suicidal thoughts increases with the severity of food insecurity for both adults and children. Next. Mortality is the most serious health consequence. Severely food insecure adults die an average of nine years earlier than adults who are food secure. Next. Nearly fifty percent of adults who live in severely food insecure households report delaying, reducing or skipping prescription medication because they cannot afford them. Next. Living with severe food insecurity costs our healthcare system over two thousand dollars per year, per person, more than those who are food secure. Next. So I'll switch gears here a little bit and talk about the Monitoring Food Affordability Report that Huron Perth Public Health released late last year. Next. So to monitor food affordability, Huron Perth surveys the price of forty-one food items across the two counties in six different grocery stores. Using a survey tool called Monitoring Food Affordability, which has been previously known as the Nutritious Food Basket, we are able to calculate the cost of one week's worth of groceries. In twenty twenty-two, the tool is updated to reflect the new Canada's food guide recommendations. So unfortunately, due to this, the results cannot be compared to the data we have from previous years. Next. So now we'll just jump into our findings. Next. So all of these scenarios that you see here include a household with children with different income sources. The family of four consists of two adults and two children. Next. So from this chart, you can see that a household with children receiving Ontario Works has much less money remaining at the end of the month, which would have to be put towards heat and hydro if that's not included in their rental cost, as well as childcare, clothing, transportation, school supplies and anything else one might need to purchase throughout the month. Next. So here are four more scenarios. They just show various income scenarios without children. Next. So you can see that an individual receiving social assistance is in debt after paying for just rent and food, which is leaving absolutely no money for other expenses. I also want to note that a bachelor apartment is nearly impossible to find in Huron and Perth counties. Therefore, a single person on Ontario Works would either have to rent a one-bedroom apartment, which would put them further in debt as it costs more, or they would be forced to rent a two-bedroom apartment and share living expenses with a roommate. Next. So we're going to speak to you about some of the recommendations that come out of both of the research reports that we've conducted. Next. So the first is relating to a living wage. And a living wage is calculated on an annual basis with data that we produce and gather in our community as the United Way. And it is collected and based upon actual local costs, such as some of the ones Candice shared earlier. In twenty twenty-two, the living wage for Perth and Huron is calculated to be twenty dollars and seventy cents. So this is broken down to the wage on an hourly basis that a worker needs to earn in order to cover their family's basic everyday expenses, such as food, housing, utilities, childcare and transportation, amongst other things. We know that people who are paid adequately have improved nutrition and better health. So we do invite you to become a living wage employer and to promote it to local businesses in Perth County as one of the strategies to improving the outcomes and reducing poverty in our region. Next. Next. Along with being, along with becoming a living wage employer, there are a few more ways to reduce food insecurity. Next. This group can advocate for federal, provincial government policies and programs to ensure adequate income for Canadians, such as basic income guaranteed and social assistance rates indexed to inflation. Next. You could also organise or volunteer at a local free income tax filing clinic. Next. Or you could offer additional free sports and recreation activities to families in your areas. So the last two points here will simply free up funds or provide extra funds to families living with low income. Next. Next. Basic income is unconditional cash transfer that enables everyone to meet their basic needs, allows them to participate in society and to live a life with dignity regardless of their work status. Next. A guaranteed basic income takes into account other income one is guaranteed to receive and supplements them with the remaining. Therefore, if you have sufficient income from other sources, you do not receive a payment. Next. There has been multiple pilots across Canada which show the success of this. One pilot local to us, despite it only being implemented for a year. Next. We've seen participants experience a decrease in their food insecurity, improvements in their mental and physical health, along with a decrease in smoking and alcohol use. In this pilot, majority of participants continue to work, with only a small number who quit their jobs and did so to either pursue further education or to find a higher paying job. To help you get started with this work, we have wrote you a letter that you can send to the Government of Canada to advocate for basic income. Next. Thank you for having us today. And if we, if there are any questions through you, Warden, we would be happy to answer. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from members of council? Seen no questions. Thank you very much, ladies. Very informative, and we appreciate that you come come into the council this morning. Enjoy the rest of your day. We do have a motion that council receives a monitoring food affordability and food insecurity in Perth Huron presentation for information. Moved by Councillor McDermott, second by Councillor Kastenber. All those in favour? Carry. Thanks again, ladies. Enjoy your day. Okay, our next delegation is from Federation of Agriculture, and I believe we have Sarah Wood with us this morning, Theresa Van Rae and Julie Dane. Ladies, the floor is yours. If you'd like to take a seat there at the table.
So we don't bite.
Of the council.
Thank you. So morning. My name's Sarah Wood, and I farm in Perth County in West Perth, just north of Mitchell, with my husband, our little guy, and my parents on the side. We're cash crop and broiler farm.
And I'm Julie Dane, and I'm a dairy farmer in Perth East, down by Punky Doodles Corners. And I'm also the President of Perth County Federation of Agriculture. So good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us here today. I'm Trista Van Rae. I am a pork producer, garlic producer, corn, soys and wheat in just outside the metropolis of Dashville, Ontario, which is South Huron. And I am Director-at-Large in my fourth year with the Ontario Federation of Agriculture. Thanks. So next slide. So I'm, we did have a video, I think everyone saw that at the lower tier council meeting, so we can skip that this morning. But I just want to go over a bit what Perth Federation of Agriculture is about. And we're farmers working for farmers. Perth Federation represents eighteen hundred farm families and businesses in Perth County. And for those farmers in Perth County, we generate one point two billion in farm cash receipts, and a lot of that money is spent in the county, of course. So it's a very important part of the county, and we are very happy to represent that. And the membership for Perth County Federation of Agriculture comes from the Ontario Federation of Agriculture's membership. Next slide.
So OFA lobbies on behalf of our thirty-eight thousand farm families, which represents a large income source for the provincial GDP and Government of Canada's GDP. We are independent of government, but all three farm organisations ourselves, NFU and CFFO, are all mandated and regulated under the Farm Registration and Farm Organisation Act. So we have a working relationship with the Western and Eastern Caucus of Wardens, and we definitely appreciate that. It's helped us to work together with government with common issues that our rural citizens have, but also our farmers have. So some of those issues that we've worked together with, roads and bridges are always on your agendas and coming to your councils, I'm sure. Energy that's affordable for our Ontario farmers, but also our rural citizens. Broadband internet. As we learned during the pandemic, a lot of our businesses as farmers run with rural broadband, and it's hard to do our businesses without it. But help, and then we have social infrastructure that we also work towards. And social infrastructure is our hospitals and our health cares. It's our long-term care. It's mental health and wellness. It's access to family doctors. Because if we can be a strong hub in our rural communities and bring people out of the cities, we have a lot to offer and we have a lot of job opportunities. So more opportunities to bring more money to the county. As most of, everyone's been to the lower tier and got their package with the Ag Matters Guides and all the information, so I won't go over that. But those do provide a lot of information. And if you need more of that information, please feel free to reach out so we can get that to you. Next.
So I just wanted to add to Sarah's little blurb. If any of you have any connections with Roma or AMO to get Ontario Federation of Agriculture on the agenda, we would so appreciate it. We all work together. So as you know, Ontario egg lands are a finite and shrinking resource. Ontario can't sustain continuing losses of agricultural land while maintaining our ability to produce food, fibre and fuel. Comparing the two thousand and sixteen and twenty-one census, they showed a decline in the area farms from twelve point three million acres in two thousand and sixteen to eleven point seven, so twelve point three to eleven point seven in twenty-one. That's equal to three hundred and nineteen acres a day. Ontario was losing some of its most productive agriculture land, the class one, two and three. OFA believes we must protect this finance, finite resource. The Homegrown Campaign, which you will find on our website, has over seventy-one thousand individuals that have signed, and that is in support of protecting farmland in Ontario. Having said that, we understand the need to have housing because I know that on our farm in particular, we did not have anywhere where we could have our son move back home to have a place to rent. So we ended up having to build, we bought, built a shelter, which apparently is quite popular these days with the shambra house. But all over South Huron, Huron County, Perth County, you know that there's such a shortage of housing. We totally support it. What we do support more is smart housing, smart building, smart planning. And we have to start now because once we pave over a piece of land, not much food can be grown on it ever again. All right, so this slide just highlights some of the things that the Perth Federation and OFA does. So I'm going to talk about what Perth County Federation of Agriculture does. We lobby OFA with items that we feel is important to our county and hopefully garner support from them. We like working with our municipal governments and helping support them in any way that they need. One thing we have run in the past is our spring forum with our MP and our MPP, talking about agricultural issues with all our commodities. We get together once a year and bring those issues to the forefront. We host all candidates' meetings when there's election years. Another thing that we've done is we've donated twenty-four hundred Field Dirt Up farming books to all the classrooms, grade six, seven and eight classrooms in Perth County, along with teachers' guides to promote agriculture education in our classrooms.
So OFA represents its members as a whole across the province and not just in Perth County. So PCFA and OFA are together but can operate separately. So sometimes our stance on policies are different, but we work together to develop those policies. And our policies come from our grassroots members when they bring issues and concerns to us. We have access to extensive policy research team that is excellent, and we are really grateful for them. Our members have exclusive discounts through OFA, and we offer education and training opportunities. So one of those things that OFA was able to bring was prior to the elections for council when we had, when PCFA hosted those get-to-know-us meetings before the election. Our policy leader, Emily, was there to be able to talk about land use planning. And so that's a collaboration approach where we can work together for the better. And so, that's a collaboration approach where we can work together for the better.
There. So, we are very easy to find. We're all over social media. Please follow us and that'll help you also to get a little bit of feel of what are the emerging issues too that we're getting concerned about. The big deal is we are very much into collaboration. And as Sarah had mentioned in her, there are so many different things that we are, that we have concerns with, that we can work better together.
And I think that's all we have right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, any questions from members of council? Counselor Kunkowski.
Thanks, Warden, through you. Not a question, but just a comment. Thanks to the OFA for your presentation today. But I also wanted to express my thanks and gratitude, not only for the spring forum, but also for your participation and input on the Ag Working Group. It's important to have that dialogue, that communication and dialogue reestablished again. And there's, as you pointed out in your presentation, there's lots of important issues that need to be addressed both now and in the future. One of them being the stewardship program that we're trying to work out currently at the Ag Working Group. So, once again, thank you and look forward to working with you in the future.
Okay, Counselor Orr.
Thank you for the presentation. I asked this the other night too, so you probably knew it was coming, Teresa.
Keep going on that, because I was going to address it during my thing, but go ahead.
Just wondering if you have any statistics on the loss of farmland in Perth County specifically.
So, I did look into that and at this point, it's really hard to pull out Perth County because it's the Canadian census where they're working with on the Ontario census. So, we're still working on that, but I don't think we'll be able to get specifics to Perth County. But we're, I've, this.
The researcher.
Research team is.
The research team is looking into that.
Okay, yeah. But thanks for that. That's a very good question and you could probably look outside your window and guess, right? Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Tristan.
I got it. We had a person who's in his presentation and Teresa was.
Did I say the same things, I hope?
No, that's you doing fine. One comment you made was the number of farmers that were going to retire.
Oh, yes, I didn't.
Fifty percent in the next two, ten years, and I looked that back up and I think that is the number. So, have you had any discussions with any government agencies or whatever? It's not like the OFA or the Federation of Ontario or the Canadian Federation, but it's how you might solve that problem.
Oh, that's such a multi-fanged, what animal am I trying to figure out here? We have had multiple conversations, in-depth reporting. Many transition experts trying to figure this out. On our personal basis, we have two sons and a daughter that work with us and trying to figure out our transition plan with the way the land price has increased from when we purchased it at like twelve hundred dollars an acre. And where I am right now, it is, I think, anywhere from, well, depending on who buys it, but anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-two thousand an acre. And keep my retirement package okay, like you do want to. That's the thing with it. It's very difficult to get the next generation back into the farm. But there are programs that we are looking at to get non-farmers and to encourage more in the university and college level to say, hey, you don't have to be a farmer to become a farmer. So, yes, we're in the process, but it's, we're looking for any input anybody would have on that one.
One of the other challenges is that the census data where that's coming from is who owns the farm business. So, in our case, it would still state that my mom owns the farm business and is hitting retirement age in the next year. But actually, the person running the farm is myself. So, the reason why is because of the succession plan and for tax purposes, you leave it in that older generation's name. So, I think there are, the numbers may be a bit skewed because of that. There are some younger farmers that are home farming, but their name is not on the title until their parents pass to avoid tax issues in the future.
I can, you just, you sparked a little thing in my mind as well. Is, in the pork industry, I used to be on the Ontario Pork Board. And one of the things, we'd always come to the meetings and it would all be fifty-plus people that were there. And I would say in the last, last six to seven years, you see more youth going in there. So, that would speak a lot to what Sarah is saying. However, saying that too, there are farmers that are selling and not, not, there's nobody taking over. So, the farmers are getting, the farms are getting bigger, as we all know as well. So, it's multifaceted. But we're still farming, growing food.
I agree with your comment you just made there and answered. But when I drive around the countryside, and I've been around Perth South for a long, long time, families have got smaller and smaller over years. You don't have that youth in the rural areas so much anymore. And I know with my own family, my three children, I said, you're either going to get a degree or a ticket. And then if you want to farm, that's great. Well, I have, my son is now, he makes more money off farm income as a mechanic in a shop, but he also farms full-time with a lot of pigs. Between him and his father, they run about fifteen hundred acres. But there are a lot of families where there is not someone to take over that operation. Yes, there are some where the kids are involved and their maybe not, names not on the title. But, you know, I used to be a banker and I'm looking at that going, so. And I know you have to do succession planning and you have to help your children succeed. But in my area, if you want to buy land, it starts at forty thousand an acre up by St. Paul's. There isn't a prayer's chance in the world that a young person can even come in and buy that at a reduced rate of, say, twenty-five thousand dollars an acre. So, the parents still have money to survive, where they can actually gather enough income in to pay the bills and the mortgage. And that was even at a lower interest rate versus today's interest rates. Like to try to get people, and my son said to me that it was a farm was coming up for sale. He said, why would I, why would I even think of doing that? Like my payments are going to be ten thousand a month or something for the next thirty years. He says, I can't even come close to making enough money to cover the mortgage payments, let alone every other expense. That is more of an issue.
So, Jim, when you talk about farmland prices that way, it is a huge issue. And I like to say I'm a fairly established farmer and we can't even afford to pay some of these prices on these farmland right now. It just doesn't cash flow. There's no cash flowability at it at all. I'm not sure about the rest of the county. I know in our area, we're facing a lot of pressure from urban development and from farmers moving from Toronto out of our way to establish farms. They get sold to big developers. They come with a lot of money and they can come up by farms our way. So, I, down in our corner of the county, I see that happening a lot.
It's the money that's coming out of Toronto.
Yeah.
Buy these farms.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
People are just operating them unless they're basically a rate of return for the money that's come out of Bay Street.
So, yeah, I'm starting to feel like a lot of these price increases have a lot to do with urban pressure.
It also has to do, we have more livestock too, because farms are bigger and bigger and bigger. And you know, you don't milk a hundred cows anymore. You gotta milk five hundred cows. You need more land base for your nutrient management and that's what's also driving the price of land. I could go down to Fort Lampton and buy land for a fraction of that cost.
And with succession, it's being open as a farmer. Like, we've set our business up, our guys, our little guy's five. If he chooses not to farm, both my husband and I are open to that opportunity. If he wants, and we are going to tell him, he has to have a ticket or schooling before he comes home. And he needs to go work for someone else for five years because then he'll know how hard it is and he'll appreciate coming home to Moma Dot. But we also have to be open to the idea that he may not want to come home and it may be better for him to stay off the farm. But we're open that if there's a cousin or a nephew or a neighbor's kid who does want to farm and that opportunity isn't at home, we can help set them up too. So, it's being open to different ideas too.
When I started as a banker, I realized life wasn't always that green on the other side. I ended up going home and finding my parents farming off cows for twenty-five years. You know, it's, I had no intention of farming when I got a stool. I mean absolutely no intention.
I have a, my undergrad's in law. I had no intentions coming home and farming.
Thank you guys for our milk and for our, because that's what that is speaking to. If we just go and throw our hands up and say, well, there's going to be the developers that are going to buy everything. Who is going to produce the food in Canada and Ontario? And we have to really be aware of what's going on. And so, anything we can, we're open to awesome ideas of what we can work with municipalities and that to help here in Perth to be as strong as we can. Like, you guys know the animal and the grains that are in our both counties. We are one powerful economic factor in Ontario, so let's not lose it. But it's, the people that I know that are in the farming industry, they're there to stay and love what we do. But it's getting smaller and sometimes tougher when there's different regulations that come down, so.
But thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions, comments? If not, thank you very much, ladies. We really appreciate you coming. We do have a motion that council receives, Ontario Federation of Agriculture and Perth County Federation of Agriculture. Moved by Counselor Kastenberg, Counselor McDermott, all in favor? Harry. Okay, we're going to move to staff reports now. And our first staff report is from Economic Development, Tourism and Transportation. And I think we have Maggie and Ashley and Justin with us this morning. And Meredith, I don't know if you're coming to the table too? No? Okay, she's going to be shy. The rest of us can come up to the table and the floor is yours.
Through the warden, I'll go ahead and start things off. So, thank you again to the opportunity for our division to provide our second bi-monthly report of twenty twenty-three. So, our report is in the agenda. I'd like to draw council's attention to a few of the economic development items before passing over to actually maybe just speak to it tourism and transportation. So, next slide. So, the first thing I wanted to report on is our digital service squad. So, March thirty-first marked the year-end of our first year of our agreement. So, a good time that we reported on it to the funders on our successes so far as well as reporting to council. So, through the first year, so our DSS, our most recent agreement, saw our team start in July. From July to March thirty-first, we were able to help forty-six businesses across Perth County. Again, these are things such as website support, social media support, as well as helping businesses access digital transportation grants. So, really excited to see forty-six businesses access service, many of them more than once. So, those who have used the service are, again, have come back to kind of continue to build their digital presence and really look forward to helping at least forty-six for the next year of our agreement. So, our funding ends March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. So, our digital service squad team will continue to try to drive that number up and to reach new businesses with the service as it continues to help businesses get online, stay online and adapt. The next thing I will touch on will be our twenty twenty-three Business Retention and Expansion Programming, which is well underway and highlight new business tours are upcoming. So, our business tours are a great opportunity for Perth County Council, local councils, senior staff and our economic partners, including ministry, BIAs and business associations to get a chance to meet the ownership of our Perth County businesses. I get behind the scenes, look at their operations, find out about their business retention, expansion and challenges firsthand, offering for us to profile career opportunities that are available to young people and others in our community, as well as primarily create that network between our business owners, our decision-makers, and really share more knowledge about what goes on, the economic engine of Perth County and really help our attendees leave as ambassadors for Perth County businesses when they leave. So, looking forward to rolling out eight, a minimum of eight this year to permanent quality. So, our first one is actually tomorrow at Ben Shaw, Canada Controls in Listowel. And we actually will like to be rescheduling our mill bank hardware tour, I should say, for next week. Just due to some other scheduling concern, but hopefully that'll give an opportunity for some folks who are able to attend on that day. To attend on that day. So, again, watch your inbox for a number of invitations coming over the next couple of weeks for tours that'll really take place during the spring and then in the fall as well. So, a really great opportunity and lots of businesses, two more that I was in contact with this week that'll be confirming dates for next week. So, again, watch your inbox and hope that you can all attend those times, uncover kind of what goes on behind the scenes, those businesses that we see. The second part of the BRNE program is launch of our Conference of Business Retention and Expansion Survey. So, this survey will be mailed out to every business and farm address through Canada Post, through their business reply mail service. Again, this is an opportunity for us to understand individual business level challenges on the expansion. And it's different than other surveys we've done during the pandemic COVID surveys or the triage BRNE survey, which were more focused on kind of a sample of businesses to understand more broader level community insights. This is really trying to delve into what's going on at the individual business level, allow us to gather the business level intelligence and then identify those retention, expansion opportunities that we can work with businesses to help them support, whether it be connecting them to funding, labor force, data or whatever they might need to help make that expansion or retention. In that case, happen. So, next slide, please, Sean. So, in addition to kind of the formal business retention expansion currently, we continue to do business retention expansion meetings with businesses that have contacted us or been connected with via planning applications, referrals through various staff or direct outreach to our team. So, during the past two months, we had seven meetings with businesses who have immediate retention and expansion plans in Perth County, so working with them actively to support those expansion plans. We had twenty investor meetings. These were meetings with companies who expressed an interest in locating the southwest of Ontario. And this is through our partnership with the Southwest Ontario Marketing Alliance, as well as we've got a few creative sites with active companies who are in Perth County for the community and towards sites for the county as potential locations for their industrial and agri-industrial enterprises. So, just a lot of activity around new businesses and businesses within Perth County expanding, expand here, which is great to see. And then finally, I'll just speak about some economic development publications that we have. So, in my hand, I've got on the screen, there's most recent Perth County community profile. So, these are really critical documents that we share with investors when they come. Any, full of economic demographic and kind of social data, really paint a picture of what's available, who's here, what businesses are here and support their decision-making to understand whether Perth County is a real place for the business. So, within the next week, you should define these in your local municipal office as well as county office. And if you have any businesses or other folks who are interested in getting a copy, please do contact us and make sure that they get that in their hands. So, that's it for the active side. I'll pass these over to Ashley for Tru.
Thanks, Justin. Next slide, please, Sean. So, in the report, or you call it, is a list of tourism programming and initiatives that we've been working on thus far in twenty twenty-three. And today, I'm just going to touch on a few of these as well as be available for any questions you may have. First, we have been working behind the scenes to grow and enhance our Discover More Adventures program throughout the winter, gearing up for Perth County's upcoming tourism busy season. To date, we have twelve active signature experiences. One new signature experience developed, filmed and photographed, planned to launch this summer and are working with two additional businesses to launch a new experience in the next few months. In a recent survey of these Discover More Adventures participating businesses, several respondents indicated interest in expanding the marketing reach further out of Perth County and noting that their guests have not been afraid to travel well over an hour for their offering. So, we look forward to keeping this feedback in mind while we strategically implement destination marketing efforts this year. Next, we continue to build on ongoing agritourism development and marketing efforts, including expanding and enhancing our Discover More Flavor Farm Gate Map Program. Our program currently has eighty-one active participants, a number that we look forward to growing in twenty twenty-three. Replacing and upgrading Discover More Flavor signage items at the roadside, providing digital marketing support and supporting agritourism events and tours across the county are a few initiatives planned and underway this year. Next slide, please, Sean. Perth County continues to put intention into growing cycle tourism in our rural region. We have now completed a new cycle map featuring nine signature routes and trail information set to launch to the public in early May twenty twenty-three. The hard copy cycle maps are actually arriving at our office today and we look forward to the map's upcoming official launch. In alignment with this new cycle roadmap, we've updated our cycle tourism webpage. In alignment with this new cycle roadmap, we've updated our cycle tourism webpage. We've partnered with the G two G rail trail on enhancements to the Perth Harvest Pathway. And we are supporting the Perth County Cycle Tour taking place on May seventh that will introduce two of our signature cycle routes to cyclist attendees. Before you and your packets this morning is an exclusive sneak peek of our brand new twenty twenty three Discover More Tourism Brochures. That we picked up from the printer this morning. These new brochures will hit mailboxes across the region during tourism next week, tourism week next week. And will be distributed across the county and province throughout the spring and summer. Lastly, for today, we continue to leverage Perth County Tourism, social media accounts, advertising opportunities. And strategic media partnerships to market Perth County as a top tourism destination in Ontario. You will read, in the first quarter of twenty twenty three, we created and launched two hundred and sixty nine pieces of digital content. Reaching over eighty six thousand online users. We will continue to create content and leverage leverage strategic marketing partnerships in order to grow our following and user engagement numbers into the future. These efforts will be in full force next week as we celebrate Tourism Week in Canada from April twenty fourth to the thirtieth. And with that, I'll pass it over to Maggie to provide an update on PC Connect.
Awesome. Thanks, Ashley. So through the warden, just providing a brief update on our PC Connect operations and initiatives so far this year. So the first one that I'm extremely excited to share with you all was our first promotion that took place on March break. And we offered free rides to the public for our free ride promotion. And we really advertised this as a great opportunity for families to get out on PC Connect. Fill their kids' day and fill it with activities. Support local businesses without having to worry about the cost of transportation. So it was very well received. This is actually one of the promotions and the advertisements that we sent out. Which received over twenty thousand impressions alone and through an extensive multimedia campaign. We had great success. So very excited to share that we had five hundred and ten rides completed that week on PC Connect. Which is over two times our average weekly ridership from the month before. So definitely a great take up. And we are quite excited to carry on with that success moving forward this year. Notably, our Route B alone had four times its times its average ridership. And Route A saw an increase of seventy six percent. So definitely a lot of new faces out there on the service. And again, we're very excited to work on this momentum and continue growing our ridership. Next slide, please, Sean. So with help of that great promotion and all of our heavy multimedia marketing campaigns that have been underway. We've completed just over seventeen thousand rides actually now. To date. And again, we continue to market this service through really unique marketing campaigns to not only those. Who need to use PC Connect, but also those who can choose to use it. So we're working on some creative initiatives. As you can see here, young adult who just like to use the service to go golfing, you know, go out and have a good time and not have to worry about driving home later that day. So. Yeah, another fun and exciting campaign or initiative that we're working on right now that's getting ready to launch. Is a new partnership with our Perth County Information Network. So that's our library network that's made up of seven, seven library branches of our member municipalities as well as Stratford and St. Mary's. And what we're doing with them is we're offering a free PC Connect pass. Where residents can go to their local library, book out the pass for free of costs. And ride PC Connect in a limited amount of time through their three day rental. So really excited to, you know, make PC Connect even more accessible to our residents and reduce those barriers. We're very excited, for example, to advertise it to our newcomers. So our libraries are the places, the place where newcomers are getting directed. To fill, you know, get sorted in their in their new community and our new communities. So they'll be able to provide them with this pass so that they, you know, get to the nearest city where they're able to fill out that newcomer paperwork. So very excited about that. And then again, our other initiatives are working on service enhancements. So we're continuing to investigate the potential. Shifting some of our underperforming routes, Route B. To an on-demand service. We're getting a report together to our Community Transportation Steering Committee shortly on that. Our service agreements do expire at the end of the summer. So we're working with. Annette and our partners to get those agreements updated. And then again, continuing to be out in the community with those network connections. So. Partnering with our community organizations and employers and really emphasizing. The benefits of PC Connect and getting as many riders on there as possible. We also just participated in the Ontario Transportation Expo this week. And actually sat on a panel that was focused on rural transportation yesterday. So that's a really great opportunity to. Share information about our service and. Really work together to figure out how we can advocate for rural transportation in the future. So there was a lot of great discussion. With other service providers as well as the MTL. And again, how we can come up with KPIs that really. Support rural transportation and emphasize the impact that it has in our community. So definitely exciting conversations have that are. Make us more hopeful for advocacy efforts, I guess, for continued financial support moving forward. So I think that's all from me today, MPC Connect initiatives and the three of us want to ask you questions that may have to go on.
Okay, questions from council? Council McDermott?
Yeah, usually if we're talking to people, it's usually because there's a problem. But I was talking to a business in Perth East the other day. And they were very, very happy dealing with the economic development department and their programs. So I'd just like to pass that on that they were quite happy. And evidently we have programs that places don't have. So keep up the good work and on behalf of the constituency, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Council Twinkowski?
Oh, thanks, Warden. Through you, not a question, but a. Comment, more of a testimonial goes to the. Ashley's presentation about the nine signature cycling routes and the Discover More program. So I am a participant of the Discover More program. And for the first time in twelve years, I had cyclists. Come to the farm gate. And they were, they were fault, they were from out of the area of Toronto. Were following a cycling route and they were circumnavigating the counties. So I think you're. The the signature cycling routes, that's an excellent idea. People are out there and they are using it without the maps, without the designated route. So I think it can only get better in the future. So just want to. Pass that little morsel of information along as a. Verification of the efforts. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yep, quick question.
Council Herson?
Warden, work for Maggie. You're doing a great job on transportation. So you mentioned about an on demand. Maybe for, say, Route B. Would that actually give us enough savings to actually make it work well? Yes, I'll be honest, if you're only going to have that few ridership on the road. It's unsustainable. So, you know, I'm just, I'm looking at it more from the vast side. The economic side of it than maybe the personal side of it, but. Because you still have to have a bus available and you still have to have a driver if it was on demand.
For sure. So through the warden, we are working on. A a study on whether it will be feasible. So the idea, if we were moved to on demand, speaking with experts in our technology. Provider and our service provider, we would shift it to smaller vehicles. That would be vans that would be operating. So we'd save costs. Service provider would save costs on the actual operating. So our costs would go down to actually operate this on demand. And the idea is that ridership would go up because it's going to be much more convenient, right? It's going to be. Available when they actually need it. So. It's, yeah, I guess, on demand again at the. Ontario Transportation Expo, it is the talk, right? It's the way of the future. It's more convenient. You reduce your carbon footprint and you're you're more convenient. So you're. In theory, going to be getting more ridership and getting people where they need to be, you know, it'd be more convenient for people. To get to work on time because they can actually book that ride in advance and it's going to get them. To where they need to be at the exact time they need to be there. So. Again, we've gone through this. Feasibility study with Blaze that, you know, we would have the infrastructure needed to. For it to be successful. So we wouldn't have rough trips being rejected, which is good. So we'd have enough. Vehicles available. But yeah, definitely something to consider whether there is even the interest in in. Or public transit at all, whether it's on demand or fixed.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming and it's always exciting what you're doing in your department and. And what you're going to do next. So thanks again. We do have a motion that council receives the Economic Development Tourism. And Transportation Update Report for Information. Moved by Council Smith, second by Council McKenzie, all in favor, carried. Okay, now we're going to move to the corporate services and our first. Is our corporate services update. And I think Annette's supposed to do that. So the floor is yours, Annette.
Good morning, everybody. The report of four council provides and we'll move back to the easy corporate services for the month of March. A few highlights. Streets of Stratford is a website that is owned and operated by volunteers. It launched on March fifteenth. And the website offers history, pictures, stories, origins of street names. And photos from the past. It's a very exciting website. It's collaboration. And although the website is not administered by Archives, Archives. Heavily contributed over the past two years. So it's nice to see this collaboration come to fruition. Legislative Services, our own Sean McCoy, hosted two sessions of accessibility training for the lower tier and internal staff members. It focused on the employment standard in relation to volunteer and staff training requirements. And there were fourteen participants at those two sessions. And Legislative Services staff, as you know, has completed a lower tier council roadshow. For both the forestry program and the Perth County Accessibility Plan. An update on some of the activities within Court Services. Finance staff submitted the required reporting for the public sector salary disclosure. And they also completed the statement of renumeration and expense for council and appointment committees, which can be found on the Perth County website. For POA, provincial offenses, court services, there are some legislative changes which are coming in September. Such that additional work is going to be downloaded to our clerks. The clerks will, starting in September, have the authority to review reopening applications. And what a reopening application is, the procedure that the defendant asks the court to strike out a conviction. And order a new trial where the defendant was not present due to no fault of the defendant. So this is additional work for the clerks because they will be reviewing these applications. They can grant the reopening, but they cannot deny it if it is to be denied or they feel that there is evidence to say that. This was not due to the fault of the defendant. It has to be referred to the justice of the peace. So again, this is more work for our clerks, but we do feel that we are in a position to be able to take that work on. Given council's previous approval of hiring the additional clerk during our budget period. An update related to amps. It was timely that councillor Kesenberg. Supported the letter with regards to school bus arm cameras. So you'll recall that what amps is, it's an alternative to the court system. It diverts a ticket, which is usually a parking ticket or a bylaw infraction from the courtroom to the municipality. And a municipality who has amps, and currently there are no municipalities that have amps, what they would have is a. Screening and hearing officers who are able to modify, cancel or affirm penalties. So this system of amps is particularly useful for camera based infractions because it's an automatic system. So things such as automatic speed enforcement. Red light cameras or school bus arm cameras would be processed through an amps program. As I mentioned, there's currently no municipalities in Ontario. Who have implemented an amps program, and that's primarily because of costs. With the amps program, you need a provincial offenses officer who can. Review the the picture and lay the charge. You need a screening officer as well as a hearing officer. So there's additional. Staff as well as technology requirements that are required for an amps program, hence the reason why it's costly. So we're continuing to monitor other jurisdictions to find out what they are doing and what their plans are with regards to whether or not. They're going to implement an app system. Specific to the issue of of school bus arm cameras. We have talked, we have spoken with Pierre Ranger, who's the chair of Let's Remember Adam Campaign, as. Council Smith pointed out this morning. In Metawawa, they threw the Let's Remember Adam Campaign, they did install school bus arm cameras. And they have a provincial offenses officer or it's the police or OPP who review the pictures. To lay the charges. They are having some issues as there is a US company that they've used called Bus Patrol. But unfortunately, the US company Bus Patrol doesn't have the ability to access what is called ARIS, a program that. Looks at the license plate and finds out who the owner of the vehicle is and the charges laid against the owner of the vehicle. So there's some issues there. We've spoken to. Patty McCully, the manager of POA in Waterloo. And they are going out with an RFI, a request for information. With regards to the technology and support needed for an amps program and processing these pictures. As it relates to school bus arm cameras. We've spoken to Jeff Barton and Craig Reed with AMO. And there was a pilot project which should be happening in Berry sometime in the near future. But they are going to start with automatic speed enforcement. And then eventually move to red light cameras and school bus arm cameras. And they are hoping to establish a processing center. Which would take the pictures, look at the picture of the license plate, confirm that it's acceptable, and then. They would lay the charges through there and it could move into an amps program or through the court system. So that is happening somewhere sometime in the future. We've also reached out to Matthew Ray, our local MPP. And he's going to be speaking to the Ministry of Transportation. With regards to any potential movement within the within the province. The issue of school bus arm cameras was also raised at the Community Safety and Wellbeing Committee in March. And it's acknowledged that we all have a role to play. You know, currently we would need the OPP and and or the Stratford Police to lay the charges. We need participation from the school bus operating companies. We need participation from the the school as the schools are directly responsible for student transportation. And obviously, the municipality has a role to play as well. Perth County's Communication Officer, Sarah, is reaching out to assist that committee with a community awareness campaign. Regarding school bus safety with that campaign scheduled to launch in September. And also through the Huron Perth School Transportation. Through that organization, we have asked that bus operators within Huron Perth gather statistics. Regarding the frequency and location of blowbys. And so we're hopeful that that will take place for a period of three months, April to June. And then that data will be aggregated for further analysis. So. Hopeful that we're able to determine, is there a particular area where this is happening more and what steps? Or or other steps aside from maybe school bus cameras to be implemented in the interim. IT and GIS, in the monthly report, you'll see an update related to the continue, related to continuous improvement. So there were various software security updates that took place. The telephone system was updated and IT worked with paramedic services with regards to enhanced communications through group texting. GIS completed mapping for the county's fire boundary information. And the first of four quarterly land parcel updates based on MPAC data. For Archives, in terms of savings and avoidances, there was a small leak from the roof. In the mechanical room, which was quickly dealt with. And by way of background with regards to that facility, there's numerous measures that are in place. To ensure that the environment is optimal for preservation of records and that situations such as this are caught immediately. So those measures include data loggers, which continuously record the temperature and humidity levels in the collections room. There's a building automation system which will send an alert. If the levels deviate from those which are predetermined and set by our HVAC units. And then additionally, staff also inspect the collections room and the mechanical room twice daily. So thankfully, with those measures in place, the leak was noticed immediately and dealt with immediately. So there was some damage. So with that, I'm open to any questions and the report is before you.
Okay, questions? Council McDermott?
On page seventy four, under FOI, you received one inquiry about an FOR outside organization. You just kind of explain what that is.
Sure, I'll actually pass that over to Tyler to answer that question as he administers our MTPA program.
Perfect. So through the warden, we did receive one FOI. It's it's an outside organization that was looking at information. Which this year should should actually represent an FOI. I think it was just typed on that. That information. Okay, so not to go into specifics about what the actual request is, but I do believe that. Okay, so not to go into specifics about what the actual request is, but I do believe that that is.
Uh, just another quick question, um, on the automated cameras. Is there some kind of a difference between a camera that's doing speeding? And a camera that would be on the bus, like is there some kind of differentiation? Because I know one of the reasons they do speed cameras.
Through the warden, I don't actually know, um, you know, what, what is important is that the picture that is taken. Meets specific criteria that's set by legislation in order for it to be used as evidence. For the basis of the offense, so whatever the, you know, camera that, that is used for red light camera versus the camera that is installed in a school bus arm. Um, the photo that's taken has to meet very specific qualifications, so I don't know if it's a different, two different makes or models of camera. Um, it's just that the picture itself has to meet the same criteria as established by legislation.
Good, thank you.
Hey, other questions? Nope, seeing no more questions, we have a motion that council receives Corporate Services March twenty twenty-three update report for information. Moved by Counselor Twinkowski, or Kassenberg, you might know, sorry. Thanks, Annette. Okay, well now we're going to move to Corporate Services, oh, we are in Corporate Services, so we're going to move to the Temporary Borrowing Bylaw. We have Dan with us this morning, so welcome to County Council, Dan, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, Council. I was, I will be speaking to a couple of reports with Cory being away on vacation. So the first report is the twenty twenty-three Borrowing Bylaw Report. As outlined in the report, this is an annual bylaw that authorized temporary boring, borrowing if cash flow concerns arise throughout the year. Historically, the county has not had to utilize, utilize this source of funding in the past, and it's not expected to at this time. If there are any questions regarding this report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, any questions after the report? No questions, we have a motion that council receives a twenty twenty-three Temporary Borrowing Bylaw Report. Moved by Counselor Twinkowski, second by Counselor Aitchison, all in favor, carried. Got the right person that time. Okay, now we're going to move to the tax policy, tax ratios and tax rates, Dan, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. So as indicated in the report, any change to the tax ratios would have the highest impact on the residential and farmland tax classes. The county continues to wait for the province to complete the next reassessment cycle, which will have a impact on the current value assessment for all property classes. It is recommended that the tax ratios remain consistent with twenty twenty-two for the twenty twenty-three year. Based on the tax ratios recommended, you can see the property class tax rates outlined in your report. For twenty twenty-three, there is a six-point five to increase due to growth. If there are any questions regarding the tax ratio and tax rates, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, any questions for Dan? We have some audio going on in the background there somewhere, I'm not just sure.
Sorry about that.
Hey, any questions for Dan on the report? If not, we have a motion that council receives a tax ratio and tax rate report. And the council adopt the same tax ratios for twenty twenty-three as those of twenty twenty-two for all respective classes. Moved by Counselor Smith, second by Counselor Orr, all in favor, carried. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to bylaws, and we have four bylaws. The first bylaw is a, the Borrowing Bylaw for twenty twenty-three, so we have a motion. That bylaws three nine two two dash two zero two three be read a first, second, and third time. And finally passed this twentieth day of April twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor McDermott, all in favor, carried. The second bylaw is a twenty twenty-three requisition bylaw, and we, motion is that bylaw three nine two three dash twenty twenty-three. Be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass this twentieth day of April twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Kassenberg, second by Counselor McDermott, all in favor, carried. The third one is the twenty twenty-three Tax Ratio Bylaw. Bylaw three nine two four dash twenty twenty-three be read a first, second, and third time. And finally pass this twentieth day of April twenty twenty-three, moved by Deputy Warden Kellum, second by Counselor Duncan, all in favor. Carried. The third, fourth bylaw is a twenty twenty-three Tax Reduction Bylaw, and it's. Bylaw three nine two five dash two zero two three be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass this twentieth day of April twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Aitchison, all in favor, carried. Okay, do any notice of motions?
Not, not a notice of motion, I must have missed the council reports.
Well, that's going to be next. Okay, go ahead, council reports, I'll let Counselor Smith go ahead.
Thank you, through the warden, so just a quick update from Spruce Lodge. The letter of, a letter we had sent off to the Ministry of, of Long-Term Care. That's getting some traction, uh, regards to the regulatory framework, um, the cost of agencies that have been incurred. Um, so that, that was good, that was well received, so much appreciation of.
Okay, anything else from anyone else? I have two or three things, uh, for Western Ontario Wardens, last Friday, we had an opportunity to meet with. The MP and MPPs and bring up our, uh, three items that we're concerned with. And those would be housing, uh, workforce to support our economic growth, mental health addictions and homelessness, and this is very well received. I'd like to thank Matthew Ray and John Nader, they were both on the call, it was a Zoom call, and we had, uh, great participation by everybody that was on there, so. That's one of the things happened at Western Ontario Wardens, also last Thursday night, Sue, Counselor Orr and I, we had the opportunity to attend the rural urban. Night where the, um, nominate, or the elect, uh, like they.
Honor.
Yes, sir.
Pardon? I'm losing the thought here, they, the Hall of, uh, Agriculture Hall of Fame. And they announced the winners, and so they went, so in twenty twenty, it was Bert Borson Bosch, he was acknowledged that night because of COVID, he didn't get. His opportunity then, in twenty twenty-one, it was Anthony John and Tina Van den Hoogel, and they're from Perth East, and they, um, have a greenhouse and. And provide, uh, a lot of restaurants with, uh, different, uh, things from their greenhouses. And then for twenty twenty-two, it was Dennis Noon from Noon Industries, from, also from Perth East, so it was a great night, it was, there was about three hundred people there. It was very well attended, and, uh, so it, it was a good opportunity to meet with, uh, a lot of people. Also this morning, um, once again, Counselor Orr and I had the opportunity to go to Stratford Mayor's Breakfast, and I thank. Or Insurance for their invite to, uh, uh, be their guests at their table this morning. Unfortunately, soon I had to get up and leave before Martin was done because they didn't start the speeches till about quarter after eight, and. We stayed till about twenty to nine, so, um, it was a great, a great breakfast too, it was a great opportunity to mingle and meet with a lot of businesses in Stratford. And, uh, be there, so. Other than that, Counselor Kassenberg?
I'm, I, it's dawned on me that I should make an announcement this morning. Um, we celebrated our volunteer appreciation night a few evenings ago. And on that occasion, uh, we present the Norm Sterling Citizen of the Year in North Perth. The twenty twenty-two recipient was Vince Judge, who is a long-serving politician in Perth County. Uh, served as warden three different times. And certainly has a history of county service, which continues with the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. Um, so it's my pleasure at the county level to recognize, uh, the service and contributions of Vince Judge and the municipality's highest honor. For citizenship, uh, was given to him for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, Counselor Orr?
Yeah, I would just like to say I'm very pleased, uh, that the Perth County Cycle Tour is their opening event is going to be in joint partnership with the Optimism Place. And it's mine to actually have a stop at the Pavilion at Perth South, um, but it is a fundraiser for Optimism Place. Um, I have recognized in the last month that some things have come to my attention that. Last year, Optimism Place turned away, um, over three hundred and thirty people last year alone, so. Um, they're doing a capital campaign now, I do know the county has given it money, um, but I do appreciate that with Perth County Cycle Tour that. Um, hopefully we can fundraise a bit more money.
Okay. Anyone else have anything they wish to tell us about? Do we need a motion to accept the verbal reports? No, okay. All right, then we do have the need to go into current session, so we have a most. Oh, sorry, right, uh, also, there's, um, under announcements, there's a upcoming tour of the hospital. I think all the lower tiers, the mayors and the councils have been invited, and please remember about that, and hopefully some, some of us can go. Counselor Twinkowski?
I wanted to point out, Warden, I've had something for other business number twelve.
Okay, oh, yep, go ahead.
Um, I, it, what it is, uh, council, it's regarding the April sixth announcement from, uh, Ontario Government. Uh, regarding the, uh, provincial planning statement, uh, the sixty-day consultation period. So I just wanted to, through you, uh, Warden, I wanted to ask, um. In that this, uh, be, uh, part of the, an agenda item for a future meeting to get. Um. Comments from the planning staff, initial comments from the planning staff. Uh, but noting that, um, there is a sixty-day consultation window that closes June the sixth. I wanted to ask not only if council could be updated, but if, uh, Perth County could provide comments to the province in that regard, so. I just wanted to bring that idea to the floor at this time for future consideration.
Okay, I know Sally's here, do you want to comment at all, Sally?
Can you hear me, John? Might just talk?
Table there.
Okay, so, um, I have been gathering, um, different information and doing some analysis on the, um, proposed policy that was released on April sixth. Um, it was sort of, um, ironic, I don't know if that's the right word, that it came on the same day that we looked at our, um. Land needs assessment, and that was one of the things that was completely proposed to be stripped out of the policy. Um, but I do, um, have a presentation coming together and report coming together for you, and I was. Thinking that I will come on May twentieth with a report. That would have a, like a, a draft, uh, comment for the posting for you to review. Um, so hopefully that works for you, um, that's, I think, the next time we meet. Um, as count, for the next time council meets, and then I would, so I'd bring a report, I would bring a presentation, and I would bring to you a draft submission for that posting. That would be on behalf of this council. I guess the question I have is, um. I'm not sure I can make it around to every lower tier in that period as well. Um, but perhaps I could. Touch base with each lower tier and see if they. Also need assistance in providing, or if they want to, uh. Not sure how to go about that, because just on the time constraints that we have, maybe it's possible, I got to look at a calendar. Um, and the other thing to keep in mind is that in Bill twenty-three, the province put the posting out. And then before the commenting period closed, they closed it and made it law. So that could happen again, um, I just want that to be made aware, but my intention is to. Um, comment during the comment period that they've provided. And to bring you that to review before that would be submitted on May twentieth.
Okay?
No, that's fine, I just, yeah, I realize things are moving at rapid pace, so.
Like a moving target, and it changes every few days.
Tell me about it.
I can empathize with staff's position, just no sooner does, does, think, do things settle down and. Get reacquainted with what the new rules might look like, then the goalposts are moved again, so. Like you say, Warden, it's a moving target, so. It's thought, if, being that the opportunity currently presents itself, we had an opportunity to try and weigh in on the situation and go from there, so. Thanks, Sally, appreciate.
Okay, good, thanks. Anything else? I guess just, I want to remind everybody that at the next meeting, we're going to do our facility tour. Right, and I'm on the right date, right, guys?
Yeah.
That we're going to do our facility tour, and if we have any council things to do beforehand, we'll have a quick meeting here before we go out. We won't know that till it gets a little closer, if there's something that's time-sensitive that we have to do, but otherwise, uh, count on that day to, uh. Get on a bus and tour the county, so. Okay, now I think we're ready to go to closed session. Uh, we have a motion that Perth County Council is going to close session at approximately ten twenty-four. In accordance with section two thirty-nine in the Minnesota Act, SO two thousand and one, C dot twenty-five. To consider a matter pertaining to neighbor relations HR. Need a mover, mover, Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Twinkowski, all in favor, carries. Okay, we're going to have, yeah, we're going to have five, seven-minute break here, yep, and then we will go into points. Okay, now we have bylaw thirty-nine twenty-six dash twenty twenty-three, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. The corporation of the county of Perth at its regular meeting now in April twenty, twenty twenty-three. And it's read a first, second, and third time and finally passes April twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Orr, second by Counselor Duncan, all in favor, carried. And the last motion of the morning, council be adjourned at ten forty, moved by. Counselor McDermott, second by, who do you want to go home, Counselor Smith, all in favor, carried. Thanks, everyone, great morning, lots of disgust, enjoy the rest of your day, bye.